Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Paul, will you lead us?
Yes. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item two, number 2012-04, Storybook Homes. Item three, number 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item four, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Item five, number 773 Scholar Estates. Item six, the 288 application of Olivia Estates. Part two, item seven, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item eight, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Item nine, the transfer of development right application for VIP real properties. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing not a motion.
Motion to adjourn the matters that were just read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part three of the agenda, item 10, number 1013, Hamlet Estates. The applicant requests approval for a new model home for the subdivision known as Hamlet Estates at St. James, number 1013. Hamlet Estates was approved by the Board as a cluster subdivision and was approved in four sections totaling 167 residential lots. At the time of final approval of section one, the Board approved eight model homes to be constructed within the subdivision. Subsequent models were later approved by the Board that were designed with a lower floor area ratio. The applicant is requesting approval for a new model designated M that has a smaller footprint and a reduced FAR than previous models. The Building Department has approved the plans for the new model M and will issue a building permit upon approval by the Board. The Engineering Department has approved the site plan for the construction of the new home. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request for a model house permit designated as Model M for the subdivision known as Hamlet Estates at St. James, number 1013.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Elliot.
Over to the mic.
You have to go to the mic.
Over to the microphone.
I'm Elliot Montur. I reside in New York at 69 Foxwood Drive in Jericho. And I am the president of the company building the project. Yes.
Do you have anything to add to the application?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Members of the Board, any questions?
I have a question. Just curious as to why you're looking for a smaller floor area ratio for your units?
Well, the original eight model homes were quite large homes. I believe they ranged from about 3,600 up to about 5,600 square feet. They sold well prior to the start of the recession. However, the market changed considerably. We subsequently came back to build three different model homes that were smaller in footprint, and they have sold better. One of the things that we were missing from our current model mix was a traditional two-story family-type home, a little bigger than the models that we subsequently built. And so it's in between the original eight models and the size of the homes we're building now. And it's a more traditional four-bedroom, center-hall-type colonial.
How many more lots do you have to sell until you're done?
There are, at the present time, I think, 45 unsold lots.
Out of one?
Out of 127. If you remember, a few years ago, we came back in and redid section four, which we held out for final approval, as a separate community of 40 homes. They were much smaller homes, in fact, in the 2,800, 2,200 to 2,800 square foot range. And they have sold pretty well. We're down to 12 lots in that community, and it continues to sell well.
Building on a smaller floor area ratio isn't going to increase the number of units you're going to build ultimately?
Oh, no, 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 no. We have 127 lots that we can build. Whether we build a bigger house or a smaller house, we can't build more than that. And we're limited in the overall floor area ratio that we could build in the development. So this helps to achieve that as well.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing not a motion to approve the model, Mr. Chairman, in the matter of Hamlet Estates at St. James, section four, number 1013, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 11, number 1149, Heinecke Estates. The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide a 1.742-acre partially-developed parcel into two single-family residential lots. The final map of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, is comprised from one tax lot that is rectangular in shape. There is an existing single-family dwelling on the proposed lot number one, and the applicant is proposing to construct one new single-family dwelling on the proposed lot number two. The property has 174 feet of road frontage on Heidi Court South and 174 feet of road frontage on Hobson Avenue. The site is entirely surrounded by properties zoned R-21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet minimum, and used for single-family residences. While the proposal meets the lot area requirements for the R-21 zoning district, variances will be required for lot number one to reduce the minimum rear-yard setback requirement from 75 feet to 60 feet. Lot number two will require variances to reduce the minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 45 feet and reduce the minimum rear-yard setback from 75 feet to 40 feet. These variances can be granted by the Board per section 322-30.4 of the Town Code, and they will appear in a table of modifications on the final map to be filed with the Suffolk County Clerk. The proposed variances appear to meet the standards as detailed in section 322-30.4 A and B. The requested change appears minor and would not alter the character of the neighborhood. While the applicant could comply with the zoning requirements by removing the existing home, there is little to be gained from such an expensive undertaking. There is also no adverse impact caused by these variances upon the environment. Finally, while the applicant's request for variances is self-created, planning feels that there is no compelling reason to deny these variances. The elevation ranges from 132 feet to 135 feet above sea level. The depth to groundwater is more than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with regard to groundwater. The site does not contain any wetland, escarpment, or natural surface water features. The property is partially wooded with trees such as oak, pine, and maple. The proposal appears to comply with the standards of the Suffolk County Sanitary Code with respect to sewage flow and septic system setbacks for a single-family residence. The Engineering and Traffic Safety Departments recommend approval. The Highway Department recommends approval with the following condition as stated in their December 11, 2012 memorandum. The Highway Department has approved the preliminary bond for the above-named subdivision subject to the following revision. A 10-foot-by-15-foot drainage easement will be required on Hobson Avenue, sketch enclosed, for existing and/or future drainage. The following resolution is recommended for Heinecke Estates, number 1149, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and find that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. And be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, does hereby issue a SECRE-negative declaration, determination of non-significance, and environmental impact statement is not necessary, in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by 31 Heidi Court South, LLC, for Heinecke Estates, number 1149, for the following reasons. A. The proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B. The parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C. The small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D. The proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E. The project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Michael James Hillebrand, licensed land surveyor, and dated April 23, 2012, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon the development of the subject parcel. Additionally, DEW recommends the conditions listed below to be included in the resolution approving the subdivision. Prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions. A. All limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be indicated on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Michael James Hillebrand, licensed land surveyor, and dated April 23, 2012. Upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by sighted fencing. C. The applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. And D. The snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department recommends approval and offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the final plat of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, is hereby approved subject to the following conditions. Mr. Chairman, conditions A through L are standard conditions placed on all subdivision applications. Condition M is specific to this application. The final map to be signed by the Planning Board Chairman and filed with the Suffolk County Clerk shall be revised to reflect the conditions stated in the Highway Superintendent's memorandum, excuse me, dated December 11, 2012, with attached sketch. And be it further resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the Town Board has posted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. And be it further resolved that the conditional approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 90 days after the Chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. If the Board favorably considers the applicant's variance request, the Planning Department suggests the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby modifies the building zone ordinance of the code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as Heinecke Estates, number 1149, as described in the following table of modifications. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Mr. Chairman, that is the Planning Department's recommendation for Heinecke Estates, number 1149.
Thank you. Applicant to represent the, who's representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ralph Freslone. I represent the applicant, Joseph Mealy. Good evening.
Have you heard the conditions there of the application?
Yes, sir, I have.
Any problem with them?
No, sir, I do not.
Members of the Board, any questions?
When was the original construction, the house number 37? When was that house originally built, the house at number 37?
I don't have that information, but I do, the deed for the current owner goes back to 1988.
The house was built in 1940.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? No one? All right. Members of the Board, I need a motion there for the SECRE-negative for Heinecke Estates 1149.
In the matter of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, motion to approve the SECRE-negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the final plat for Heinecke Estates 1149?
In the matter of the final plat of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the zoning variances?
In the matter of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, motion to approve the variances as listed in the table of modifications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the performance bond?
In the matter of Heinecke Estates, number 1149, motion to approve the performance bond estimate as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
Motion?
Second. She moved. She moved, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to everyone.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three is item 12. Mr. Chairman, I believe that all of the Board members have received a copy of the letter that was addressed to the Board by Mr. Anthony Guardino regarding Hummingbird Estates. It was a subdivision previously approved by the Planning Board, which is located within the Town of Smithtown and borders on the villages of Nissakwag and Head of the Harbor. I do believe that Mr. Guardino would like to address the Board regarding one of the conditions that had been originally placed on that subdivision.
Okay. Sir Guardino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Anthony Guardino, Law Firm of Farrell Fritz, PC, Uniondale, New York, representing the subdivider here in the applicant, Hummingbird Holdings, LLC. Mr. Chairman, I had sent, as Mr. Donadio mentioned, actually, two letters to the Board with respect to a request to have a subdivision condition waived. Namely, it was a condition that was imposed in the November 2011 conditional final approval resolution, which required my client to execute or enter into a road maintenance agreement for a portion of Branglebrink Road, which borders the southern edge of the subdivided property. The condition was imposed by the Board, again, in November of 2011. At about the same time, it imposed a similar condition on the owner of property directly across the street and also fronting on the south side, fronting on Branglebrink Road, that was proposing a two-lot subdivision. The intention was, at the time, to have the two subdividers enter into an agreement for road maintenance and to ultimately acquire a portion of the road. Unfortunately, since the time that my client received conditional final approval, the Town Planning Department had allowed the subdivider on the other side of the road to not enter into the road maintenance agreement as a condition to filing the map, which was the condition on both subdivisions. But instead deferred that obligation to the point in time where the other subdivider was ready to pull building permits to build presumably a new house on the lot that was created. What that has done for my client is put them into kind of a very difficult predicament that they can't get out of right now, and that's why I'm before you, making a request on their behalf. The subdivider on the south side of the road has indicated to me that he has no intention right now of proceeding with a building permit for this additional lot.
That was by counsel?
That was by counsel, Frank Finio, who represents Mitchell Circoitz. At the time, he told me that, you know, we're just not motivated right now. There's not much of a market for a new home, so he's not willing to move forward. Well, we can't enter into a road maintenance agreement for 50% equal proportion, equal shares if I can't make the other person come to the table. At one point, I tried to get that person to come back to the table, and unfortunately, what I had learned was that, he said, "Well, I'll talk about it, but I want your client to pick up 2/3 of the obligation, and I'll pick up 1/3." So what he has done is he has used the leverage that the Planning Department has given him to extort a concession out of my client. All along, the intention was that there'd be a 50-50 share of the road. That being said, I'm now before you asking this Board to waive that condition because we've wasted over a year. November 2011 was the date of conditional final approval. I am now a year further down the road. My clients have been carrying the property for another year. And quite frankly, I don't know how to get out of it. I can't get out of this predicament without the waiver of this condition. And I'm asking that the Board consider that situation and consider that we are in this predicament through absolutely no fault of our own. We were willing to cooperate. We drafted the agreement. We negotiated the agreement with the Town Attorney's Office. We were prepared to enter into the agreement. And then the playing field changed when the other subdivider was allowed to file his map prior to executing that agreement. And now, quite frankly, I don't know if it's going to be five years before he comes to the table, and my clients just can't continue to carry this property. And they are severely prejudiced by the actions of the town. And we are respectfully requesting that the Town Planning Board now waive that condition. We did have a meeting at one point, and there was some discussion or some concern that was expressed by the Town Planning staff that because the town owns this section of the road, that the new owners of these lots and these houses that would be built might look to the town for maintenance and other, you know, maintenance and snow plowing, et cetera. What we have agreed was, and I put that in the letter, that we were willing to place in each deed an acknowledgement by the purchaser, by the grantee, that these lots front on a, originally, the words were "private road" for which the town has no maintenance obligation. Since then, the Town Attorney's Office asked me to get rid of the word "private" so that it just says that it borders on a road for which the town has no maintenance obligation. I submit that that should address the town's concern, which is, again, that somebody would look to them and say, "Hey, I bought this house. I'm on this road. You own it. How come you're not maintaining it?" This would be an affirmative act that they would have to take and be an acknowledgement that would be in their deeds. It would run with the land, that there would be no maintenance obligation. So I believe that that addresses the town staff's concerns. I do want to point out that I have done some research, you know, with respect to, you know, obligations for roads in connection with subdivisions. And I just point the Board to Town Law Section 277, which, you know, states that a planning board, you know, shall require, unless waived, that streets and highways be, number one, of a sufficient width and suitable grade; two, suitably located to accommodate prospective traffic; three, afford adequate light and air to facilitate fire protection and provide access for firefighting apparatus; four, that they be coordinated so as to compose a convenience system conforming to the official map; that they be suitably graded and paved; and then where appropriate, that they have street signs, curbing, lighting, et cetera. Again, it's unless waived because the next section of the code, 277-7, says the planning board may, when reasonable, waive any requirements or improvements where it is found not to be in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare or inappropriate because of inadequacy and lack of facilities. I submit here that there is a road. I don't know if you are familiar with this area of the town. It's a very, very limited triangle that's kind of tucked in, as Mr. Donadio mentioned, in between the villages of Head of the Harbor and the village of Nissakwag. But Branglebrink Road, the portion that we're talking about, is just a section of a very long road that serves the village of Head of the Harbor, the small section in the Town of Smithtown, and also the homes in the village of Nissakwag. So there is a road there. It's paved. I would submit that it's of sufficient width and suitable grade. It works. There were about, say, about 20 homes that front on this particular piece of, on this road. So there are many cars that use this road. Many homeowners use this road, plus the people who cut through between the villages that don't live on the road. They also use it. So it's clearly suitable. There's no evidence that it's not sufficient for a fire truck to drive over it. I mean, there was a fire on the property. Fire trucks, fire trucks, and then just north of this property, fire trucks were obviously able to access the site. It's suitably located to accommodate prospective traffic. I would point out, we are talking two homes from my client's property and one additional home on the south side. So three homes added to the single-family homes. This is not going to add 100 cars a day. This is going to add very, very little traffic. And I would submit that the road that's there is sufficient to accommodate it. And then I just also would like to reference 288 of the Town Law, which talks about no building permit being issued for the erection of a building unless a street or highway giving access to the proposed structure is on the town's official map or is shown on a plat approved by the Planning Board. Here, I believe that road is on the town's official map. It may not be a town road, and I'm not sure what the status is. It was owned by the county. It was a private road at one time, but it is, as far as I can tell, on the map. And more importantly, it's shown on the plat that you guys just approved for Tuhami. Tuhami's lots, like our lots, front on this road. The town can't have it both ways here. If we have frontage on a road, it's a road. If it's not a road, then we didn't have frontage. We would have needed variances for these lots because these lots didn't have frontage on a public road. So in one breath, the town is saying, "You're on a road." And now they're seeking to tell us that we're not on a road. But the fact of the matter is, we are on a road. We're on a paved street, and it's public, and it provides access to the 20 homes and to other parts of the different villages. Finally, I just want to also make reference to the extension that I had requested. It was a subsequent letter that I sent last week, at the end of last week. I'm not sure if the Board received it. But it came to our attention, I'm quite honestly, I was surprised because we had been playing with this, trying to figure out, trying to work our way through this for so long. As I mentioned, the conditional final approval was issued on November 2 of 2011. That approval is good for 180 days originally, and then the town, under a prior Town Law section, was allowed to grant two 90-day extensions and no more. So effectively, you were given a year. We've been at this for more than a year. We have been working in good faith with the town, trying to work our way through this. I believe the town was operating like as we were, that this duration was suspended or extended, one or the other, that we were working towards a, with a valid subdivision. I recently learned that the Town Planning Staff's position may be that because the year has passed, that we might have lost all of our rights in this subdivision and may have to go back to square one. If that's the case, that's very troubling. But fortunately for us, as I pointed out in the letter, about a year or so ago, there was a change in the state law whereby it used to say you can only have the two extensions of 90 days. Now the state law allows for the Planning Board to grant unlimited extensions of the 90 days where appropriate, and where the circumstances warrant. I would submit here, if there ever was a case that would warrant, you know, an extension of time, you know, I think it would be this one since we really have not been at fault here at all. So I would ask that the Board consider waiving that condition and imposing the other condition, which is having that language in the deed, and which we're happy to do. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Members of the Board, questions? Members of the board, questions?
I'm curious if there's any record in the department as to how it came to pass that the opposite side of the street owner was able to file a map and be approved without necessarily entering into an agreement.
In reviewing the record, I was, and I had to refresh my mind by calling the other applicant to find out why we did that. We had a meeting that was held in our office. It was indicated at that particular meeting that they were close to an agreement, and they were running up to a deadline. If we could allow them to file the map, they would have the agreement forthwith. And what happened was evidently negotiations brought down after we allowed them to go ahead with the restriction that no building permit would be issued for the house unless we had an agreement in place. And the applicant acknowledges that that agreement is still in effect, that he knows he can't get a building permit.
But the whole purpose of that restriction that was put onto the two applicants was that prior to the filing of any map, prior, that they would have to issue a road maintenance agreement before they could file a map.
That's correct, yes.
And that was not done with Mr. Circowitz.
That's correct.
So that, how can you ask somebody then to do something there that you didn't ask there the other applicant to do? It's unfair.
Well, first off, I would mention that this was done with both applicants' knowledge when we did this. I know Mr. Guardino says he did not, was not aware of this at the time, but we did this in concert, trying to help both applicants manage this agreement.
What's the basis for that statement? Mr. Guardino, to my knowledge, would not deny that he was placed on notice of something if he wasn't.
Well, if that's the case, then...
Well, wait a second. I'm not finished. So what's the basis of your statement that Mr. Guardino was aware, on behalf of his client, that that was going to happen?
What I would prefer, if that was the case, then, we should have the other attorney present.
I'm just asking what the basis of your statement is that Mr. Guardino was aware of that.
I answered that question already.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. I gave you my opinion. If you don't like it, that's fine.
No, you said you want the other attorney to be here. I want to know the basis for your statement that Mr. Guardino was aware of that.
Mr. Guardino and the other attorneys met in my office, and you have a letter which I trans, I gave you to that effect, on that specific day stating that they were near agreement on the road. That was verified by a letter that I sent to you.
I guess we should hear from Mr. Guardino, then.
That was brought to my attention. And I was at a meeting, I think the date was in March. There was a meeting to discuss the road and try to figure out how we were going to work through this. But there was no discussion in my presence of allowing Mr. Circowitz to move forward on a different timetable or without the same requirements as my client. I would never have allowed that. And just to the point, I mean, Mr. Derubias, you just said that you did it to help out both parties. My client wasn't at the stage where my time was running out and I needed to file the map. We weren't at that stage. Only Mr. Finio's client was at the stage where he needed some relief, and the relief that was granted was to let him file his map. I wasn't close to that, so I would never have asked for that at the time.
And I would have offered the same deal that I gave to him, and I would give it to you. I said that before. I would give, I would allow you the same privilege that I gave the other applicant, so that it would remain on an equal footing. I have no problems with that. I'm trying to help both of you in terms of this particular subdivision. I was the one who came up with the solution of having the town acquire this road on your client's behalf, so that we could move forward with this particular subdivision. And I resent, at this particular point in time, the implications that I was not trying to help both parties over here. I bent over backwards trying to put both of these subdivisions together, knowing full well that it was going to be difficult.
But the thing is, Mr. Derubias there, that the condition was, and the wording that
I look at, it's highlighted, that prior to the filing of their respective final maps, they have to put a maintenance of highway agreement in their application.
I agree with you. Yes, I did.
Now, was that done by Mr. Circowitz?
No, it was not.
No, it wasn't. So that that's the argument that I feel is unfair to the client here, that this man is standing there and saying that he's not going to do anything with his lot, and yet there, who maintains the road? He's not going to maintain the road, even if he's not going to build now. He's not going to maintain the road.
But he can't get a building permit at all because he's aware of the fact that there is a restriction on here.
He doesn't want a building permit, right?
At this particular point, he doesn't want a building permit. That's the way it is. Then the other applicant has to figure out what he wishes to do at this particular point.
Well, I think that's what he's trying to do.
The other applicant, if you are aware, and I think I mentioned this to the board, his performance bond is due to expire at the end of this year. What I've explained to him, because there is no maintenance agreement in place, I am not recommending an extension of that performance bond.
I agree that that shouldn't, but that doesn't have anything to do with his application right now.
If Mr. Guardino...
The only thing is, when Mr. Circowitz's performance bond runs out, you're not going there to agree there to anything that he does. But right now, he has an application pending.
If Mr. Guardino wants to extend, under the new revised law, his subdivision, I have no objection for doing that. That's permissible under the law, so it does not expire.
Okay, so that's one issue, right?
We can take that off the table.
One issue done.
I don't think that is...
That will be done at the next meeting?
Well, we have to advertise that, and we have to...
Why can't we do it in the next meeting?
We have to make an application, and we have to distribute it, and I have to put notice in it. And because it's adjacent to a municipality, I have to allow them notification.
For the extension?
For the extension. Any action of the town.
Extensions are generally done administratively, but...
Well, as I understand his problem, from the east, the property, the only way into his property is by Branglebrink Road in the village of Head of the Harbor. Is that correct?
From the east or west?
East. Well, in the west there, it's a village of Nessawquag, correct?
That's correct.
And on the north from Branglebrink, it's a village of Nessawquag, right? So he's sitting between two villages that have already approved buildings going up under those, under that road, and he can't do anything with this thing because of this nonsense.
Well, it's not nonsense. I'm sorry, I don't agree with you, Mr. Derubias.
It is nonsense there if you don't, if he's not equal to, if he's not equal to the other applicant.
I'm willing to put them on an equal footing. What has been the issue from the day one is who is going to maintain that particular road. That has been the issue. And we have agreed, we agreed at the beginning, when we started this subdivision, because that was under ownership by the county, that the town would acquire this particular parcel, which I committed and got the town to buy it, with the understanding that they would maintain this particular road, because the town highway department would not maintain it. If that was the case, then I have no objection to it, either side developing. Now, I'm willing to extend his performance bond, extend his approval, and I will be willing to let him file his map, subject to the same conditions. What I am concerned about is who's going to maintain this road, and at this particular juncture, I will tell you right now, without this board's understanding, because I believe that there's a liability issue here, and I disagree with Mr. Guardino, I'm proceeding on the basis of, I've already contacted the county and am going to offer to return this land to the county. However, I'm not being mean about this. What I am attempting to do is also examine the probability that the county has the ability to sell land that's adjacent to properties back to the particular property owners. And what I am exploring is selling this property back to these two gentlemen, both subdivisions, allow the subdivisions to occur, they will own the property and not the town.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, I just would like to comment on that.
That should have been thought of. What you're talking about going back to the county should have been thought of before you allowed a map to be filed by Mr. Circowitz. Mr. Derubias, did Mr. Circowitz, either himself or through counsel, indicate to you during these discussions that you had a willingness to maintain his share of the road or to maintain half the road?
Well, I think what the issue is, is what he, they both said that they're willing to maintain their, what they consider to be their share of the road. I think what the issue is, is a disagreement over what that should be. Mr. Guardino believes that it should be 50-50, and the other gentleman believes that since he has less lots, that he should maintain something that's less in that particular process.
I know that's what he wants, but the only reason he wants that is because there, he was given there a prior approval there for a final map there with the county. That's what caused him to be able to talk like that.
I think we have a situation here, whether it's intentionally or unintentionally, which it doesn't matter. There's two people here being treated differently, okay? And that's something we need to fix, because that should, that in itself presents liability concerns for the town.
We could move away from the legal questions just for a second. Do you disagree with Mr. Guardino's assertion that the building of these couple of de minimis houses is not going to significantly increase the traffic on the road? Because I'm thinking that for all the legal technicalities we're debating here, you're talking about building a couple of houses on a small little segment of road, most of which is maintained by other entities in the town of Smithtown.
Actually, all of which is right now plowed by the other entities.
Do you disagree with the assertion that this would be a de minimis change to the area to begin with?
I agree with Mr. Guardino on that. That's why I've supported this subdivision from the beginning. It's relatively minor, and this was meant to be a minor issue. That has now become a major issue.
Do you disagree with allowing him to file his map with a waiver of this condition, but with the reservation in the deed of the provisions he mentioned where it was acknowledged to the buyers of those lots, that the road is not maintained by the town?
Well, right now, Mr. Circowitz doesn't, isn't even interested, in my opinion, to even maintain the road that is there. He doesn't have any incentive. He's been given a final map, and he didn't have to file there a maintenance agreement, therefore, with the town.
And he's been given a map that he can't do anything with, and also, too, that is going to come back before this board...
I know he can't do anything with it, Frank, but what is he supposed to do, wait for Mr. Circowitz there to decide whether he's going there to do something with the property or not?
Exactly.
What was understood at the beginning is that somebody has to take care of this particular road. Someone has to take care of it, and the town was not going to take care of it. Now, if the board wishes to proceed on this matter, you certainly, this is within your jurisdiction to do that. However, one, you have to file, we have to file a former waiver request that has to be done. It has to be distributed, and because this is adjacent to another municipality, and that municipality is also part of the subdivision, they have to be noticed as to what the changes are. Mr. Guardino, I strongly disagree with you that it's not an administrative matter.
Well, the, remember, the adjacent municipality, Nessawquag, we have one lot in the village of Nessawquag, they quite frankly are waiting for this board, which is compromising or jeopardizing that part of our approval, because we're running out of time there. March 30th, our approval runs out. They are waiting for a signature by this board. So we're really hung up here. So it's not like the village of Nessawquag is not going to know what's happening here. They're waiting for me to write them a letter and say, "This is what happened at the town of Smithtown." They're watching this closely.
And I have to tell them what we're doing officially and what this board is doing officially. So I have to notify them, and I'm required to by state law. When we have a subdivision that transpires over municipal properties, I have to notify them of what this action is of this board.
But this board already notified those municipalities of the subdivision approval, and now all I'm seeking is a waiver of a condition...
Which they have to note, be notified of.
Well, let me ask you this. When you waived the condition for Mr. Circowitz, did you notify the other villages?
No, I did not.
Why not?
But I also...
But why not?
What kept in, well, I think what is not known here, or not being discussed here, is Mr. Circowitz can't, did not get anything other than the filing of a map and is not being able to proceed until we have a road agreement in place. That was my attempt to try to help Mr. Circowitz in the same way I was trying to help you. Obviously, I made a mistake in that particular regard, and I will acknowledge that. However, at this particular juncture, I will still be concerned about the use of that particular road. Now, what I was saying here is that this is not a formal hearing for a waiver request. It has not been advertised as such, and as such, if this board wants to, I could have it ready for the next public hearing. But in that regard, I still have to notify the other municipalities with regard to the fact that we're changing a condition of a subdivision, a subdivision for which we are jointly reviewing. The second thing is, is I have to distribute this to the other departments so that they may comment on exactly what you are saying here.
Okay.
And that will be given back to this board.
All right. I just want to point out something, just a couple of things, and I don't mean to be difficult here, but this approval in Mr. Circowitz's decision specifically says, "Applicants shall execute an agreement with the town regarding the maintenance repair of the town-owned portion of Branglebrink Road prior to filing the final map with the county of Suffolk." That condition has been waived, right? That condition is waived. It's already filed.
And I said I would waive the same condition for you under the same circumstances.
But let me just go back to, I didn't see any notice. I don't believe the Tuhami plot came back to this board before that condition was waived, but you want us to come back and have a whole bunch of process that I believe is unnecessary, when we weren't being treated, again, we're not being treated the same. With respect to the issue of being treated equally and giving us the same rights, when you first look at that, you say, "Right, well, that seems fair." The problem with that is, my, Mr. Circowitz bought a house. He has a house there. I think he's working on a house, and he has another lot that he may or may not develop in the future. My clients have vacant property. They bought the property with the intent to sell it, subdivide and sell it. They have finished the subdivision. There's no market right now for a vacant lot. If somebody comes to them and wants to buy it, and they'll say, "Well, what's the deal with the road?" You say, "Well, we don't know what's happening with the road, because we don't know what the agreement's going to say. We don't know who's going to enter into it, and more importantly, I don't know when it's going to be entered into. It might be one year, two years, five years, 10 years." And guess what? You can't build your house until the guy across the street decides that he wants to go forward. Who's going to buy that lot?
Mr. Guardino, you are asking to be treated exactly the same as I treated the other person, and I'm willing to do that.
It doesn't help us.
I understand that, but what you are asking this board to go through, and that's up to this board to decide, is to go one step further and to waive the issue with regard to that road. That is something I cannot, will not recommend.
Well, you acknowledged making a mistake. Now it's time to fix it, and as you said, it's up to this board. So what's, Mr. Guardino, what's, would you like, we can't, this is not a public hearing. I think we do have to notice this to take action. What do you want to see happen here?
Before you answer that, could I pose one other question that might be helpful in your determining? I'm curious now, if everything had been done the way anticipated from the start, road maintenance agreement, 50-50, everybody was happy, what would the town's liability be if any injury occurred on that road? And if we now go forward with the reservations in the deed, because it's too late to get the 50-50 agreement, what would the town's liability, if an injury occurs on that road, be under the circumstances where you have a reservation in the deed that it's not being maintained by us, but you haven't assumed responsibility? As opposed to, in the first situation, you would have both assumed responsibility?
Well, if, under the shared maintenance agreement, and if I could just step back one second, one second, before I answer the question, that agreement, again, we were fully prepared to cooperate. My client paid to draft the agreement. He paid to survey the road, right? We paid all of that. We went through all of that exercise in an effort. Wasn't, again, I mean, it almost seems like I'm trying to wiggle out of something. I'm, we want to do it. I can't do it. I wish we could enter into the agreement. I just can't do it. With respect to the liability question, the, the way the agreement would have been structured if we were able to take title to the road, which is the way it was evolving, the town would have no responsibility, because they would no longer own the road. So the two subdividers, they would be the owners of the road, they would be responsible for maintaining the road, presumably, they would be responsible for the road. The way it would stand now with the covenant is that the town would have some liability just by virtue of the fact that it's the owner. I mean, it's acknowledged that they're not doing any maintenance on the road, so what a court would do with that, I don't really know. But the fact is, you're probably going to get sued because... But the fact is, you're probably going to get sued because you are the owner. So that, that is the case. However, as Mr. Derubias said, he's going to try to give it back to the county. We're fine, I don't care who owns the road. I just want to get my map filed. It doesn't matter to me. We didn't have to take it in the beginning, but now that we, we were willing to go forward, and Frank, I did tell you, I mean, look, you were, I know you were trying to make that happen, and when we were all on the same page and we all had the same motivation, it worked. Mr. Serkowitz was, he was involved, that's why we were meeting with Frank, is to figure out Frank Finio, his attorney. We were trying to come to a, a way of getting the county to agree to sell, to allow the town to sell the road to us without triggering a reverter. That's what we were doing, and when everybody had the same motivation, it worked fine. The problem is that once the playing field changed, Mr. Serkowitz has no motivation, and quite frankly, he's watching to see what happens, because he wants my client to pick up the tab for the whole thing, because my client needs to... If somebody, if somebody got hurt on the road right now, would the town get sued? I'm sorry? If someone got hurt on the road right now... Right now, they're the owner of the road. Would the town, town get sued? Sure, sure. So if we, if we act in the manner that you're suggesting, nothing changes in terms of liability. Well, and, and that's a good point, because actually, if we weren't here before you seeking a subdivision, the town owns the road. So they own the road, they have responsibility... There's no increase in liability to the town. I don't see any increase in liability. Okay. So what do you want to see happen here? I'd like to have that covenant, unfortunately, I, I'm asking that, that, that covenant, that that condition be waived, only because I can't comply with it. It's an impossibility. Okay. But do we need to have a public hearing? Do we need to notice it? I think we need to notice it for the next hearing, uh, next meeting. If that's what, if the, if the board is more comfortable with that, I'm fine. I would, I, I would be reluctant, though, to try to build in a lot of process here, because I think this is a simple request. I agree with you. I, I think it should be noticed for the next meeting, and that we could take, sound, you're getting your waiver, you're going to get your extension, and then we can vote on, on your waiver request. Right, that, that's fine. And just, I, I would like to point out, my client just whispered something in my ear. You know, one thing that I did find is that in the, in the packet that was sent to us after we got the subdivision approval back in, in November of 2011, you know, it has form covenants that are, that were required to file. And in the covenants, it says that, you know, and it's just boilerplate right now, and you're supposed to plug in the condition. So you plug in all the conditions, and then you record this in the chain of title. It's interesting that if we, if we were at that stage where we actually recorded the covenant, and we needed to have that covenant modified, in other words, eliminate the condition, this covenant says it only requires a resolution of this board. Unlike a lot of covenants, which say you can only have it modified after a public hearing, it doesn't require that. So it's a little bit, it's a little unusual. Now, it's kind of, you know, it, it, it's ironic that now, before I memorialize something, I need to go to a public, I need to have it noticed as a public hearing, yet if it was already memorialized and in the chain of title, this board would have had the right to just modify it without having to go through all the notice. I'll do whatever the board wants to do, because I want to get through it.
Is, if we, if we give you an extension there to come to, and to, to do a public notice on it, is that going to affect there, can you get it in and get the application in to Mr. Derubias, and in a timely fashion so that we can have it there before you run out on the Nissacquag?
Well, yes. Well, when's, when is the next board meeting? This board?
Next board meeting is, uh...
March.
First week of March. March what?
March 6.
March 6.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that, that would, that actually works because it expires in March 30th or 31st, whatever it is. So you're not, you're not prejudiced if we ask you to post it as a public hearing and come back? If that's with the board, again, I just want to get through this. I understand, I understand. I don't care. Sorry? Okay? Yeah, that, that's fine, that's fine. So, but just so that I understand, what has taken place now is just an instruction to come back with, after a legal notice is filed, and an application is filed. You're, you're going to do the extension, applicant, you're going to ask for an extension on your time, right? Well, I, I thought that my letter would be sufficient for that. I don't think there's a...
No, there's, there's an application...
Do you have a formal application?
There's an application process, both for this and the waiver request.
Which he indicated he's not going to oppose. Fine, fine. And then we're going to vote on your request to waive that condition? I would just urge the board to hopefully vote at the March 6th meeting, if we could, just so that we can... I don't have a problem with it. I, I mean, I...
I don't have a problem with it. Anybody on the board have a problem with that?
No.
Getting it off from March 6th?
And voting.
Yes.
No, you're going to get a...
As long as all the i's could be dotted and the t's crossed before then, it'd have to be done, then we can do it.
You're going to get a vote if you, you know, get it on, get what you need through them, and... Fine. Okay? Very well, thank you. Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Frank? All right, that's what we'll do then.
So, do we, I don't think we need a resolution to ask this to be calendared next time, do we?
No.
Okay.
I, this is not, this was a public meeting, but not a public hearing. I was speaking to counsel. I would strongly recommend against any resolution, because there's, it hasn't been noticed or advertised.
Then we won't do a resolution?
This was a discussion, but I will keep, since the board has directed that you want it for the next meeting, I'll make sure that it's on for the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Guardino? It's fine, fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The adoption of the minutes for January the 16th, 2013.
Motion to...
Do we need, do we need a motion to add to do this?
No, no motions on that.
Just going to, he's doing.
Motion to adopt the minutes of January 16th, 2013.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. The correspondence. The letter from Mr. Hilbert.
Did everyone get a copy of that letter?
Isn't that the, isn't that the parcel that we already have some...
Yes.
Some authority writes out of?
We just thought you would want to see it, yes.
And would you explain to Lucretia there what's been done so far, and give her that ordinance?
I will do that.
Okay?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, could I just mention something to the board that we were not aware of? Mr. Guardino...
Not, no, not, if you want to go get him back in here, we're not going to...
No, this has nothing to do with the controversy.